My name is Ian Cleman. I am a field manager for Ford Montana and facilitator for the event tonight. Ford Montana is Montana's largest civic engagement organization in the state. Through our work, we provide opportunities for like this one, for young voters and the young at heart, to learn about engaged non-political systems. If you are interested in learning more or attending further events, please follow us on our social media sites and look up our website. Before you again, I would like to thank the people that made tonight's event possible. To thank you to Glacier Rains for allowing us to use this space. I thank you to Hungry Horse News and especially Chris Peterson and Avery for allowing us to record this event. For those that are unable to attend this evening, I would like to thank the candidates for being here tonight, and I'd also like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Now, how this event will work? Each candidate will be given the same amount of time to answer each of the questions. When you reach half time, I will show you this symbol. And when it's time to stop, I will give you this symbol. For the audience, on your table, you should find three by five cards, much like this, as well as pens. Those are for the audience questions which we put in the second half. And if you do not have enough pens or cards, you can take them from tables that do not have people at them, or there should be more at the bar. And when you write your questions, please try to focus them to local events, as well as questions that all of the candidates can answer. That way, they're most likely to be chosen to go with the pens. All right, we will begin. If you would like to start with opening statements, you'll have 90 seconds to do your opening statement. Darren, would you like to start?
I'd be happy to. Wonderful. All right. Now that's working? All right, thank you. My name is Darren Fisher. First off, I'd like to apologize. I will have my phone with me, my children at the age where they're just learning to be home alone, and they're a couple blocks away. So if there's a crisis, I apologize. I'm going to take the text and then run home, take care of my kids. But they're doing great, so hopefully that won't happen. But once again, Darren Fisher, I've been on the city council for, I believe, 12 years now. I've been on three terms. I own Back Slope Brewing here in town with my wife Carla. And prior to opening Back Slope Brewing, I worked for the Forest Service doing trail maintenance, wilderness work, packing mules, running chainsaws, and digging ditches, and generally doing groundwork for about, yeah, 18 to 20 years I did that before this. And I don't think I need any more time than that, so I'll take my hat.
I did. I am Kelly King. Most people, I just got married back in June to my fabulous husband back there. I feel like I'm Wheel of Fortune. A lot of people know me as Kelly Hamilton. My name on the ballot does say Kelly Hamilton due to the time restrictions of when we had to register. Legally, it's Kelly King. I was born and raised here in Columbia Falls. My grandchildren are fifth generation in my house. My grandparents bought it in '56. Our family worked through Plum Creek and Warehouse up until I left in 2021. We have a long legacy of being in this valley and in this town. I was appointed to city council last year about this time when Doug Harper retired, and we went through a little process thing. And I have been attending city council meetings since before COVID, when it got into resort tax and things like that, and a lot of the buildings going up. I started attending meetings and even through Zoom call, talking with Susan and things like that. So when the appointment came up, I thought, what the heck? Why not? And I was appointed to it, and it's been huge. It's a lot of learning. It's a lot, but it's a lot of fun. I enjoy it. I think community service is very important to everybody. I'm also the Plaid County Toys for Tots coordinator. I work with the warming center in Kalispel. I work with several nonprofits just because I have a love for people.
John Piper. John Piper. I've lived here all my life, 63 years. Have a wife, two children, five grandchildren. Worked at Plum Creek for 30 years. I'm currently at the Veterans Home as a nursing supervisor. Seen a lot of changes in this town. I think it's something I want to keep track of. I've been on the council for eight years, still learning. But I think the direction that we're heading is we've lost a lot of valuable industry, and we need to invite something back. So at this point, I think you shut me down.
That's capital.
Oh, I'm good. Yeah, I am fine.
Hi, my name is Catherine Price, and I have lived in Columbia Falls my entire life. I went to school here, and I raised four children with my husband here in the community. Three of my four adult children currently reside in Columbia Falls and/or the surrounding area. And currently, I have one grandson that attends Glacier Gateway. I started my first business in 1996, and currently I have two businesses within our community. I am deeply invested in the people of Columbia Falls, and I have coached youth sports and volunteered in the schools for decades. I'm a volunteer at the Veterans Home, as well as a court-appointed special advocate for children in foster care. As you can see, I'm deeply invested in our community, and I care about the city, the community, and the members, not only within city limits, but beyond. I am the only new candidate currently running for city council, and I hope to bring new ideas and the voice of a lifetime, involved community member and business owner to the council.
Wonderful. We will start with our first question. If you would like to keep the mic.
Oh, fuck me.
We're gonna go back and forth.
That's what Jonah said.
What inspired you to become involved in local politics?
I decided to get involved in local politics because of the growth, the rapid growth that's happening here within Columbia Falls and the amount of the community members coming out and sharing what they think about this growth. The variances being allowed for some developers but not others, the anger that you hear at a lot of these city council meetings. And ultimately, I just feel like we don't have unity anymore. And I would really like to see the voice of all citizens, not just the residents, but also the ones that are in the donut zone, being heard and considered.
I was a volunteer for the Columbia Falls Fire Department for 22 years. Like I said, it'd be a lifelong memory. The changes have been dramatic. Like I say, with the industry going away, I think the city's had to reinvent itself a little bit. I, uh, there are some changes that are kind of striking to me. But I think we've been discovered. And I think there's a lot of things that happen within our valley. I just think we need to keep a check on. And I guess that's why I'm nervous, as a local voice, to kind of keep looking at things.
See, I kind of want Kyle Lashford Politics right after that. It's our local city council. There's no politics. I got involved because I'm with John. I grew up in fire department. My dad was on fire department with John and half the rest of the county. So we were used to being involved in a lot of things that went on in town growing up. And back in 19, resort tax started coming out. And at first, I was like, oh my gosh, are you kidding me? And I thought, you know what? All I've heard is gossip. I didn't have any actual facts or anything on it. And I heard gossip about this and gossip about that. So I actually started going to the city council meetings, and it was fascinating hearing the actual underworking of everything that was going on instead of people's ideas of what was going on. I wanted to know the facts. And I just got into it from there. And you never know anything about this. It goes on forever.
When my wife and I moved to the Flathead Valley in 2009, and we were working while I was working for the Forest Service. And so I looked around the valley. We could have lived in any town we wanted to. And I really appreciated and felt welcome in Columbia Falls. It's a very blue collar, very working class town, something that I could relate to in how I grew up and in the work that I was doing. So we chose to live here. A couple years later, I was just looking at more involved, and there were a few candidates, city council, who decided not to run. So there were vacant seats. And I didn't have any hacks to grind, so I wasn't going to run until a few other people said they weren't going to. So I said, I'll jump in, throw my hat in the ring. And then after I put my hat in the ring, those council members changed their mind and came in. So we ended up having a contested election. I was lucky enough to win. But I just wanted to be a part of making this town better. And yeah, we've all talked about the growth and the changes we've seen since I moved to the valley in 2009. This town has gone through some very dramatic changes. And I'm happy to be a part of helping this city grow as much as we can.
Can you describe in your words the role of city council and city councillors?
So city council is a terribly boring and terribly important job. And the vast majority of what we do is dictated by the state. And I think there's very many laws and there are very many rules that we just have to follow. And part of our job is explaining to the citizens what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. Because really, I think 90% of our decisions are dictated by what the state allows us to do. For example, with the Senate bill, 382, I think, coming down, they're changing what we're allowed to do with zoning. And we can't make decisions outside of what that comes there. So pretty much, we just, city council and city councillors need to keep the city within the legal boundaries of what it's allowed to do and take into account all the citizens and the surrounding area folks to make sure that all their voices are heard as best they can.
I think with city council, we're, I can kind of say, a liaison between the state and the people of the town. We are the ones that, the city staff comes up with things that, when they're ideas for developments or different things that can be arbitrary like that, come forward. The city staff puts the information together, and the information comes to us. We are the ones that make the final decisions on a lot of this stuff. We have to weigh what the state says we have to do, and we weigh what the people want us to do. We have to combine those both together. And so often, there's such a huge boundary between those two. So it's up to us to decide. We do our own research, different things like that, to come to our best decisions. By being a council person myself, I think it's a matter of being involved in our community, of listening to people. We're just like everybody else. We don't sit higher, we don't sit lower, we sit right in the same, what I'm right now. What do you do at the state? But we're the same as everybody else in this town.
One of the things I've looked at lately, and that's just because my daughter makes me, is social media. I say, well, put that out the window. You know, I look at the participation. I run for council because I care. I look at our council meetings sometimes. We've got hot button issues that come up. We get inundated. We get bad mail. We get, we get bad stuff on social media. Quite frankly, I don't read it. But we're to the point that we need to look at things from our own perspective and what looks good to us and protects the town, protects the citizens. It's not an easy job. It's a, you know, a lot of paperwork I take home sometimes and I go, ugh, you know? I think I'll take a nap. But it's amazing what we go through. And I think it's a very important job because we're the liaisons. But I could dig a hole, one more second. I could dig a hole in my front yard tomorrow, and there'd be more of you coming to look down that hole than there would be just a regular council meeting. So I just encourage you all to be part of the process.
Don't start my time yet because I'm not sure I heard the question correctly.
In your words, what is the role of city council and city councillors?
Okay, well, city council is a government entity that is supposed to represent the citizens of the community. So Columbia Falls city residents appoint council members in order to be their voice when it comes to certain situations in the town, development, roads, safety, public, you know, anything. And again, like the other councillors said, that they have to be a liaison between what they're allowed to do and what the citizens want them to do. But more importantly, the citizens of this community have a voice, and they need to be heard and be considered on any, anything that's voted on when it comes to how the government is going to represent us citizens in this community.
Can you describe what makes Columbia Falls such an amazing place to live?
Wow. You know, I could start with the 80s and then go to the 90s. You know, Columbia Falls, when I think of Columbia Falls, and I think of open green space, the Flathead River, the mountains, all the, all the nature that surrounds it, but with a small town feel. We are a small town community based on tradition. A lot of tradition, a lot of, that all comes into play with the character of this town being the people. The people are what make Columbia Falls great. The people, when you're driving down the road and you wave to everybody, the concern with your neighbors, the welcoming and friendliness to the tourists and the travelers, but ultimately, the year-round residents that live here, not just in the city, but in the surrounding areas, is what makes Columbia Falls awesome and great. And it's why people want to be here. This is why everyone wants to move to this community, is the people.
I'm not going to burn any of your time. It is the people. It is. It's the people in this community that either welcome the tourists or you don't. But it is, it's the people here. I started out years ago, and I was the only one on my block from here. And I, you know, I got people surrounding me, but not bad people. Why is it going to come out of change space? I'm kind of here to put that foot down a little bit.
All right, vote number three for it is the people. It's the community spirit around here. Kathy and I grew up together. Sorry, doggy or something. We've known each other forever. And just because of the fact that it is a small community like this, we know everybody. You know, all you got to do is go to the post office, go to the hardware store or something, and you see people, and everybody just waving to each other. Even if you think you recognize somebody in the store, say, hey, how you doing? I think we give off a feel to people that aren't from here when they need help with something like, where is this? Where do you go to eat? What is this? I think they know, I think we just project that you can come to us for things. And also with this community, when there's hard times on somebody, Columbia Falls pulls together. And you can live in Kalispel, you can live in Whitefish, but it takes integrity to live in Columbia Falls. We don't have the big box stores. We don't have the big breakfast nightlife and things like that. You have to have integrity to live in Columbia Falls, and that's what these people have.
I'll absolutely echo the people. I love the small town feel here. I love the way that my kids and I can walk to the grocery store, walk to schools, bike right around town. But yeah, definitely the people here, when we move to town, so welcoming, just honest, working best folks. And I love going around town and just, yeah, people I don't know but I recognize. There's waves, there's when we go to the community market and my kids run off. I'm not worried about them leaving because half the people at the community market know my kids, and I know they're being looked out for. And even when I walk a lot, when I walk from my house to work, and people I don't know will slow down and stop. It's like, hey, Back Slope, got it. Your car broke me down, you need to drive something? I was like, no, no, I'm walking on purpose. But they were just stopping. People I don't know but just recognize me generally and are kind enough to look out for me and ask for that. So those kind of interactions are what make this place so special.
So being such a special place, it makes sense that a lot of people would like to live here, and that kind of demand drives twice the value. Is there a program that the city council could do or some kind of development that could help support keeping houses affordable in Columbia Falls for people to continue to live here?
There are a number of, you know, government programs. We work for the Habitat for Humanity, work for the Northwest Community Action Partnership. And there are great grant programs out there that can help with that. But it's definitely an all of the above solution. And we can't just look to just one thing. Certainly, if we want to keep housing affordable, it has to be denser than it is right now. When you look at some of the houses, wonderful houses outside of town that up on the benches that are going for $600,000, $700,000, that if you can afford to live there, that's great. I know I can't afford to buy a house like that, and other working best people can't afford to buy a $700,000 house. And history and economics have shown us that the way to bring housing prices down is to get some density. And it doesn't have to be dense everywhere, but we need some dense developments. We look at the river, not the river, the Highland Park means down there. I think those are a great addition to town. If we could do some more infill with some denser units, that's the only way to get prices into that, like $300,000 town home where working class people can, it's still a reach, but you can get there. If I was moving town today, I could not afford to buy a house, period. And I think that goes for the most of us on the council here.
I have a soft spot for housing and people that need it. If people have money and they want to build a house and move here, don't change their ways. Come on in when you're moving, fine. But I do have a soft spot for those that cannot afford housing. And I have been learning through collaborative housing and Northwest Mutual Trust that there are opportunities out there that we are now finding out about through these organizations coming together and getting these resources together to get housing for people that is affordable. And I don't mean affordable on a two-person wage with a couple of engineers. I'm talking about people like me that work at Walmart, people that work at Smiths, things like that. There are programs out there, finding out that there are resources that we have not tapped into, that individuals have not tapped into to help with their rent and help with their housing. Moving forward with collaborative housing, they have a several-step plan with lots of resources connected to it. They are in Kalispel, but they are valley-based. They're also Lincoln and Sanders, I believe. There are opportunities there that I am looking forward into with them for housing for homeless, for people that just want to live every day and not have to struggle to pay every single bill, where you're not Robin Peter to pay fall, where you can just be comfortable in my town. And that's a big push for me, is to get affordable housing in this community. I could go valley-wide, but I'm going to stick Columbia Falls because it's where I live.
Affordable versus attainable. Yeah, it's a two-way street. Sometimes, sometimes folks don't put that in their forefront. You know, you're willing to sacrifice the vote for the house. I realize that happens. But I think, I think we need to be always within these groups trying to find reasons and ways that we can, we can put housing up. The city's actually looked at a couple of parks. Well, one I can think of on Railroad Street, how to develop that, you know, that the city can have a part in that to make that affordable, attainable. You know, I mean, it's a park that's quite frankly worthless for anything right now. Baseball, I played baseball on it, and it stinks. So I think it needs to be renovated into something else. And we need to look within the city. 382 is going to start pushing that to us. So, and 382, okay, my numbers aren't good. But 382 is going to push us that, that way. So we need to look at within Columbia Falls to try to make this a little bit better.
Affordable housing is not, you know, creating density. You know, creating the density and all these houses at $700,000 is just not affordable. And it's not sustainable for this community. I would like to see the council look more into land trust, where you separate the land from the actual structure. So the land is actually leased to the low-income wage earner, and they pay a lease to the city for that part, and then they build or get their loan to build their house. Once they get to a stage where they want to sell that, the land is still owned by the city, and they can sell to another low-income person. There'd have to be covenants and everything written so that it had to stay with affordable housing. But there's state land trust land out there. There's city land that we could be developing and separating the title of the land away from the actual structure.
So I think we just talked a little bit about development. One of the things that comes up often when we talk about development is the character of a place, something that we've mentioned before. Can you please describe the character of Columbia Falls? And then what kinds of development might fit with that character and not suit that type of character?
Well, again, I would say the character of Columbia Falls is actually the people. So maintaining their, the existing residents currently live under these conditions, which include a lot of green space, which includes yards, trees, walking paths. Creating, growth is inevitable, but creating dense growth gets rid of the yards, gets rid of the open space. So we have to consider the existing residents and their wants and their desires, why they're living here. They're currently paying for this city government, this community, but also future growth, but maintaining that green space, maintaining that open space. So to allow the same qualities of living in the small town without losing our character, the people, the voice of the people. We shouldn't be looking at what the new potential residents want and developers want. We should be listening to the existing residents and then trying to move forward with more growth, but maintain the green space.
I think the character of this town is represented here. These people running for office, they could include me or exclude me. But, you know, that says a lot. They've got a lot of history in this town, so do I. Yeah, we all want stuff to stay the same, but we got to grow. We got to maintain this city. It's got to, but we need to, we need to keep an eye on it. We can't stop everything. We just can't. Property rights come into an issue, a lot of things. 382 is going to push us in a different direction. That's, that's why we're here, or we care. We're running for a position that's going to hopefully keep our thumbs on that. But the character of this community is, is all of you. You showed up here. You know, it's these guys and you guys. So, you know, the character, the character is here. We just, we just got to figure out how to, how to work between the character and what needs to happen.
And I agree, the character is in Columbia Falls. It is the people. It's the coming together, it's the community, it's the parades. We have parades here, and people from other towns show up for our parades. We were just talking about this bowling alley. How many of us grew up here bowling here? And the different bowling alleys, there used to actually be three bowling alleys here. This one one still. Yeah, but it is the character. When we have developers that come in, you know, we've got buildings that people say, I don't like that, it's not the character of Columbia Falls. People need to delve into the history and the actual workings of the buildings that are being destroyed and taken down instead of saying, well, can't somebody do this? Can't they do this with it? They actually need to delve into the information on this and find out why that building has not been maintained or why that building is being taken down. And when someone comes in and they've got the money to do it, and I'm not saying anything bad about money, I'm just saying that they are willing to put the money into developing something, and they are by the state, by the law, things like that. We get into a pinch. We do take everything into consideration, especially the character of the community. But we do have to grow, we do have to swap flies. We do have to go by the state. We do have to go by the state on a lot of this stuff, and sometimes the buildings don't look like how they look like Columbia Falls used to look, but we do have to move forward with these things. Who doesn't miss that lot? I do. But we're gonna move forward with what we have to do. That's, that's our character too. You have to understand, growth has to be part of our character too, or this town will look like it did in 2008.
I'm gonna be clear, the question is the character of the community and how that changes with growth.
The character of the community and how, what kind of developments can not sort of change that character, to maintain that character.
I think I'm gonna echo some of what they've already said, the character of this town is certainly in the people. And once again, I come back to the people I see around here, the people I meet around town that are working class, blue collar, hardworking people. And if they can't afford to live here, then that character dies. And I have nothing against anyone moving here from out of state with a lot of money, they've earned it, they can buy whatever they want, they can do whatever they want. But the people who work at our grocery stores and work in our restaurants and work in our bowling alleys can't afford the housing prices that we have now. So we need to be able to keep working class people in town someplace they can afford it, and we need to find ways to do that if we want to keep this from turning into whitefish where every house is $700,000 and then we're buying out of state here.
So this is giving a little bit of a different question, it's more of a lightning round, so, answer to the question, super quick question. Should pineapple be on pizza? Yes or no?
Absolutely.
Definitely.
No.
Yes, and jalapenos with the pineapple.
Another lightning round. If you could have a celebrity canvas through your campaign for the day, who would it be?
Canvas for me?
Not yours.
Oh, my. Man. And it's a lightning round, so I'm supposed to be sponsoring.
Lightning round. That's what it rounds.
Oh, shoot. Celebrity? I don't, I don't know. I would say Troy Aikman. And you didn't ask why, I'm saying Troy.
Yeah, good question. Troy Aikman?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, anybody from the Chicago Bears?
Ronald Reagan.
If I could have Bob Dylan knock on doors for me, that'd be really great.
With the growth of the receiving the valley, traffic is a concern for many. How many, excuse me, how can this issue and the cost be managed as population and visitation continues to grow?
That's a very great and difficult question with, once again, getting into what the city of Columbia Falls is allowed to do. And it comes down to working closely with the county and the state and the other cities around here. Because even if we want to put a stop sign on Nucleus or crosswalk on Nucleus, it takes us months to work through the state, since that's state highway. State highway and federal highway bisecting our town, that we're constantly in negotiations with them. The city's been working on improving safety issues on Nucleus with crosswalks, and it's a, it's a hassle working people state, they're doing their job, they're doing the best they can, I understand that. But the same thing, you know, on the highway, that's a, that's a federal highway, and anytime we even want to change a speed limit on there, it's an 18-month process with studies. So that's, it's a difficult question, and it's a long, drawn-out process that just takes willpower.
I would invite everyone to read city council notes. We did have MDOT in a couple meetings ago, and we were discussing different things, such as left turn signals, not being yellow all the time, maybe some greens where you can actually go. And they go, they tell us about the process that it goes through, yes, 18 months at a minimum to get through these things. They have, we, we kind of have to invite them in to look at this, then they have to do their studies of how it backs this up and everything like that. Although the process is tedious and, what do they say, the wheels grind slowly, we're sticking to it because there are, there are different things we can do about the traffic. I mean, we've already got the four lanes, we've got stoplights, we've got signs, and we have the traffic. We have to do all the little things we can put into place, such as different signs, different speed limits, things like that that come up, but the community comes forward with too, which would be really nice when we have MDOT there, that the community also comes forward, it's not just our ideas. So there are little things that can be put into place, although time-consuming to get them there, it's tedious, but that doesn't mean we're not gonna push forward with it, getting the letters into MDOT to keep these things moving forward. Please read your agenda minutes on the city council website.
Left turn lane. I purposely was late one night for a meeting, just to say, well, I was stuck in a left turn lane that didn't have a signal. That's ridiculous to me with the amount of traffic we have. But inside the city, I think, you know, we have to start looking at, you know, this is where I look. We deal with MDOT, we do all that stuff, we, we fight them, we partner with them. But inside the city, sadly enough, I didn't want the resort tax. We're here, and I'm seeing the benefits. So within the city, much as you county folks don't want to hear it, we're taking some of your money, and we're taking some of my money, and we're taking some of the tourist money, and we're improving our roads and our streets and our sidewalks. As far as MDT, the MDOT goes, we're gonna keep working on them, that's all we can do.
Along the lines that they were saying, we are controlled by the Montana Department of Transportation, whether it be Nucleus all the way up to Bull Bridge or US Highway Two through town. So we, you can't do anything without approval, and it, and it takes time. But I agree, left-hand turn lanes are a must, I mean, especially during high-traffic season. I think it would be wise if they timed our streetlights so that they all stayed green, moving all that traffic through at the same time, and, you know, had that on a timer. That would, that would help greatly. I think the city didn't do themselves any favors when they allowed development downtown with not requiring parking by those developers and getting rid of the alleyways. So what I see being a problem is congestion of parking on this Nucleus when we have the delivery trucks come and they park in the center of the road to deliver the materials that these businesses need now on Nucleus, which is a highway. And in the winter, when all the snow gets pushed to the center, these trucks block the only lane of traffic, which does cause congestion on Nucleus. And this is a problem with those trucks loading on Nucleus. They should be using the side streets or the alleyway. He gave him the stop. I wasn't done.
I was gonna, I was gonna go.
So a few more fun questions. What is your favorite local restaurant?
Oh, man, you can't really just pick one.
Can you tell us what type of food? I would say my favorite place to go is Lori's Deli.
My wife's kitchen. No, I'm a backroom guy. I really enjoy their food.
Although they do a little backflip and the form and style here, I am a backroom first because it's like two blocks from my house, and after I eat all that food, I can walk home.
I'll make you a stand of three forks. I enjoy this well, but I hate a lot of that.
So this is another sort of normal question? More normal question. What is your stance on the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA's cleanup plan for the Columbia Falls aluminum company? And do you generally support that plan? Please explain if you have issues with it and what those issues might be.
I'm not crazy about the plan. I would love to have seen all that waste dug up and hauled out of here and put someplace appropriate. But we're working with EPA, we're working with the federal government, and I think that's out of our hands right now, and I don't think that's going to happen. The slurry walls that they're proposing, they still need to be fully engineered, so I can't say for certain exactly how well they'll work or won't work, but they have worked other places. I'm trying to be cautiously optimistic about that. Once again, I wish it was all getting trucked out of here because we're at the top of this watershed. It's not just about us here, but it's, we're the top of the watershed, and it's all goes downhill from here. So I would really wish it wasn't there, but I'm gonna use some due diligence as they fully engineer this plan and hope that my cautious optimism is well-founded.
Having lived here forever, and this CFAC, ARCO, Glencore, whatever you want to call it, I have the cautious optimism about it too because I don't want to lose hope. They come forward with another plan, they say this is what we're gonna do. I don't think it's ever gonna end. I really don't. I think there's gonna be steps taken in different directions many times. I do wish that the actual cleanup included a lot more of the area than what they are in, because being local, I know that things were done in other areas that were from that plant. And that stuff, whether they clean up the entire site, they're on their net right now or not, there are still gonna be contaminants in other areas. When it does come to the cleanup, I do not want just EPA's opinion, I do not want just Glencore's opinion, I want a third party in there that has no ties monetarily, no ties politically, not even a friend of a friend on their own, a third party in there looking at those results, taking the results, looking at the results so that there's no bias whatsoever.
As a council in Columbia Falls, you know, that's not Columbia Falls, that's not us. We're overseeing it, and by God, we will. Slurry walls are not an answer, I don't think. I don't think they've given us a, a true fix. One thing I would say is, it'd be nice if the county would realize, hey, that's yours. We're, we're being the watchdogs, but you guys gotta be involved. You know, work together with it. But several meetings I attended, I don't know, city council guys were there, I didn't see any commissioners. You know, thank God for, well, I should say a couple of, of people on the city council that, that have a knowledge of it. I don't. So I listen to a lot of that, I read what I can, but that's, you know, come on, county, help us out here. We're, we're trickle-down, but anyway, it's yours.
The EPA and even Montana Department of Equality aren't vested in this area, you know, we live here, our grandparents have lived here, our kids are gonna live here, our grandchildren are gonna live here, we live here. And they are just proposing a plan that is cost-effective for them, or what makes sense because they can't fix the problem. Montana DEQ allowed pollution to go on for close to 30 years, knowing they were having heavy contaminants. So, oh, he's, so, so the thing that concerned me about the plan is, yeah, they're building a slurry wall, but capping it is they're wanting to just stifle it, they just want to trap it so it can't go anywhere else. They need to get rid of it. And I see that they don't want to because of cost to truck it out of here, but they still need to excavate it and get rid of it. Just capping it is not the answer, because then they're never gonna be able to use that property for anything else, you're never gonna be able to drill holes into the ground for future use. But, I mean, can I talk, can I take some of your time? What my, what my concern is in that plan, nowhere in there do you see them reporting the levels of contaminant. They just tell you what's contaminated, not the level. So that tells me it's high and it's gonna get people upset. So I think going forward and monitoring that, they need to report those numbers of how much they're getting per million.
Now, we're at the second half. Has anybody available to have some questions? Hope you come around and pick them up if you wanted to get a quick stretch break. Be right back.
Well, number one, I don't believe that we can tell people what they can and can't do with their property, and so people choose to do short-term rentals. But within the jurisdiction of Columbia Falls, as long as they are a registered business, they're collecting the resort tax as required by law. You know, they should be able to operate as a short-term rental. Now, in the paper, it said how many we had in the area, but I think that is included in the outside surrounding area, not all just within city limits. And the ones outside of the city limits aren't required to collect that resort tax. So, you know, it's, it's really not fair to the ones, I mean, some have to collect it and some do not, but we also cannot tell property owners what they can and can't do with their property unless we set a moratorium and limit how many are allowed within city limits.
No, I think Kathy touched on that, that well. I think we're gonna see a decline, I think, or, yeah, a lot of those places are, are coming up for, for a long-term rental, where they were short-term rental, yes, Columbia Falls needs to probably keep an eye on it, and we do. But I've also noticed houses for sale, that's a whole different gamut, they're not being offered for a short-term rental. Within the high school range, if you look down the high school lane, just, just 13th Street, I'm surprised at the amount of houses that are for sale. Short-term rentals, I think, it's a property rights thing. I think it's been a good boon for people that are able to do it. Yeah, they made some money. But I think eventually, this is my, my thing, I think it's, it's going away. I think eventually we're, we're not gonna deal with much of that, and prices are gonna come down, maybe level off, maybe that's my optimistic approach.
I think when it comes to the VRVOs, there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk about, there's always the anecdotes you hear that have no factual basis, people being kicked out of their homes so that someone could create a VRVO. I've never actually seen documentation on this, so I have a hard time whether that's happening or not. I don't know whether to believe it or not, if someone does want to do a VRVO, if I am about our community making money. I don't think anybody should have to not do it because somebody else doesn't like it in that aspect of the VRVO. However, I am with John too, it does seem like it is declining. If the VRVO could be turned into some sort of housing, if that's what the person wants to do, I would fully support that. But otherwise, it's, it's one of those things that's gonna come and go, VRVO, people are gonna make money during the summer, and whether that housing is available full-term is really up to the property owner.
Yeah, with the short-term rentals, it is, and my belief that property owner can do that with their property, that is their right, and is also law, city council has talked about it a lot, and looked all the decisions up through the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is just shy of Supreme Court, and we've looked at what we are and are not allowed to do, and there's very little we can do to regulate short-term rentals, you know, if we wanted to, past what we're already doing right now with business licenses, collecting resort taxes. So it's totally fine for property owners to use it that way, but it does definitely drive up housing prices, and we've seen over the past several years, a lot of speculation on that. I've seen, I think even there's a house for sale down in Cedar Point, you know, for over a million dollars. It's clearly like half that neighborhood, third of that neighborhood is just vacation rentals, and speculative is driving up the housing market. So there's just, those are two facts. They are allowed to do that, and it drives up housing prices, and wherever between them you're living.
Please describe how being a local or a long-term resident is beneficial.
Being a local or long-term? Well, certainly, I think everyone else here has been in town longer than I have, and I acknowledge that. And I don't think, and I think we've all said it, there's nothing wrong, we're all here because we want to be here. And I know that I'm here because I could have lived anywhere in this valley, I could have lived in a lot of different places in Montana or Wyoming where I'd been bumping around at the Forest Service, and I actively chose to be here. These guys were lucky enough to be here, and I came to see how great it was, it's like, I want to be a part of this too, I'm gonna get involved. And I think being a local is more than, not necessarily about being native, it's about coming in here and getting in, being a part of the community, being involved. Where I'm on nonprofit boards, I'm part of the city council, I'm running local business just Where I'm on nonprofit boards, I'm part of the city council, I'm running local business, just there's buy-in. So a local can be here for a lifetime or a local can be here for a year as long as they get buy-in and they're going to be a great part of this community.
I think that with the community size that we're in, I think there's a comfort in seeing faces on the city council that people know. You know, they, my maiden name was Headstrom, right? There's somebody's going to say, oh, yeah. So there's just the familiarity, I think, of people thinking, okay, I can be comfortable talking to this person or I remember this person doing this or something like that. I just think people knowing faces and having known them for a long time, it gives you an idea of what to expect when, you know, we're up here running for this. So, you know, it's quite hard for Darren to come in in 2009 and do this, but he is a local face now. I think people know that they can be comfortable coming to him like that. It's just the familiarity of being here. I mean, if someone were walking the door right now and say, I'm going to run for city council and I'm from California, I don't think the government's doing it.
No, I respect anybody who's willing to put themselves through the city council regardless of where they're from. I think it's, yeah, I'm a lifetime guy, but you know what? You come in here and you make some sense and talk to me and we can butt heads, we can do a lot of things. Darren and I don't always see eye to eye. Kelly and I may not. Kathy's running for loyal reasons she wants to. But, but I mean, really, you know, that's what makes a council work is your diversity. We're getting plenty of it around here, but I think that's what makes things happen on the council is different ideas.
What was the question?
Please describe how being a local or a long-term resident is beneficial.
As opposed to the council or just being a long-term, lifetime resident?
I think both.
I think whether you're a lifetime resident or you're a local or somebody that's moved to this community, whether it be six months ago, a year. My husband, I still tell him, call him a local, but he's been here a long time. I think it's what your investment in the community is. So, you know, regardless of somebody living here a lifetime or somebody just being here five years, what is your investment into this community, into the people, into the schools? And you have value either way, but the more you invest, that's what makes you a local.
How can we revive the old red bridge for pedestrian or bike access?
I would love to get that red bridge as a bike access. I used to ride my bike across it before it got completely shut down. And I've tried to avoid the holes in the lumber and I used to be able to drive across that. It used to be a great access for that other side of the river. And I don't think that's really viable. It's, I believe that, you know, we've got to get the county involved and Army Corps of Engineers. You've got so many different departments, but if it could be a walking path or a bike path for the community members to use, then it wouldn't be such an eyesore, but it's a historical part of our community. And I would really like to see it fixed up and be usable again for foot traffic and bike traffic.
I've got to be careful here. Yeah, it's the county again. City, city probably partner with it. It's not ours. We developed a park at the end of it, but, you know, we're going to need some assistance there. A lot of groups have started up about that. I think it's a great thing. I think a pedestrian path like that is feasible. I don't think crossing cars across there. I am not a structural engineer. I don't know what it'd take. But it definitely would sure behoove the citizens of Columbia Falls and online areas if that could be developed into something. I just, I'm not sure how to do it. I think it'd be great, but it's one of those things. We're just going to keep researching and money's got to come some. Maybe some big developer would like to ship you out.
I'll shirttail the big developer to take over the bridge, but yeah, it is county. A lot of those groups that come forward do think that it's a city thing and it is county, which just means you've got bigger wheels driving slower. I too rode my bike across that ridge and got the front tires stuck between and went over the handlebars. We all have that story. We have stories of that red bridge forever. Structurally, yeah, I have no idea on it. It would take a lot of work from a lot of people that really wanted to see it going, that really could go through the process and it would not be an overnight thing. It would be years in the making. I wouldn't, I would not be against it. My energy right now wouldn't be towards the red bridge though.
I would love to see that red bridge developed. It'd be such an important piece of connectivity between the rural areas of River Road, letting people get into town, letting kids ride their bikes. I think that would be amazing. But yeah, the county owns it. When, I know the city had looked at it when people were asking us over a decade ago what they could do and the rough engineering estimate there just to stabilize it was over $600,000. And once again, that was about a decade ago. That's because I've evolved. So it's, it's well past that now. The county owns it. They haven't been too interested in working with anybody about it. And yeah, I would love to see it developed, but doesn't seem very straightforward now.
Do you think there's a possibility for more interaction between council and the audience at city council meetings? And could this be helpful?
Well, with the, I really enjoy when people come to city council and when they speak to us. But the way that the system's set up and the laws are set up, it's not supposed to be like a tit for tat back and forth. When you get into conversations, it can kind of get out of hand. So I love when we have citizen participation and I love when we have folks show up, but people just need to be aware that it's not a, an open argument back and forth. So I encourage you all to come to city council and tell us what you think every single week, but some folks want to get up and have a conversation and we have to follow our process and the law.
I have to agree on that. There are, there's strict procedures that we do have to follow at council meetings, especially when it comes, you know, we get into the public hearings and stuff like that. And I love the letters, send letters. I love reading the letters. I read those several times when it comes to these things because I can actually sit down and focus on that with that one person and not, you know, you're not thinking who else is going to talk. But there are strict rules about it and for a reason, you know, this isn't a, we can't have the council meetings being pitchforks and, you know, things like that. We have to have the structure of it. It does get frustrating sometimes because we hear somebody come forward in a public hearing saying something that we know is a right, but we can't do anything with it. It's a matter of the people researching what they hear, not just believing what they hear. Same thing with what we say. If you're not sure about it, research it. I think there needs to be a lot of positive communication between council and everybody in the city, all the citizens, because we're the citizens too. And the biggest thing is researching, not just believing what you hear.
I had a home number until I was told I didn't have a home number anymore. But I always put that out there. If you had a question and want to clarify anything, you can call me. Council meetings, yes, we have a decorum that we have to follow. It's hard sometimes for all of us as councillors not to be able to answer directly. But public comment, there's a public comment period. We're not going to comment back to you, but you can lambaste us if you want to. But we're sure going to listen to it. I write a lot of those things down and maybe next meeting I'll bring it back up. So there's, there's a, there's a process, but I encourage everybody to attend the council meeting if you haven't. Sometimes it's kind of boring and sometimes it's not.
One of the main reasons I threw my hat in the ring was I did attend some city council meetings and I did not appreciate how some of the council members were talking to the people getting up and making comment. And it was more of tone where, you know, you're just irritated with that everyone's saying the same thing or everyone might be harping on the same thing. And I don't believe the council members nor the mayor or city manager, you know, should talk to the citizens like that. And that was a main reason I threw my hat in the ring. But I understand that there's, people are passionate about how they feel. They're passionate about why they're there and why, and why they're concerned and they just want to be heard. And their voice should be heard and their opinions should be valued.
I think we've got time for one more. So the city functioned under mayor council form of government for eight years before changing to a city, city manager form 30 years ago. Is it working?
I do not, I believe that the city manager, having the amount of power that she has, the current one has, it needs to be an elected position. There are several people appointed over certain departments in the city and she, they should be able to run their department without input from, from her outside of her being their boss. But there is no regulation of the city manager, right? City manager, you know, hires, fires, has their fingers in all these different departments and whether it's her job or not. And that's the reason you hire, you know, zoning people, you know, police chief, a fire chief. I don't, I don't believe it's working. I believe that it needs to be an elected position.
I think as a council, we oversee what the manager does day to day. We can't always be there for that, but I, I entrust maybe sometimes too much, but I think overall, I'm happy with the system. We've got somebody in place to, to monitor day to day. I've worked with the current manager on different levels, being a fire chief and different budget issues. And I've always wanted to be a straight shooter. I've had a good relationship with her. But we do oversee what she does. We approve her appointment. So if there ever should be an egregious thing, I think throughout that process, we could deal with it. At this point, I think the system's working.
I think people need to understand too that mayor and city council do not see everything that goes on with the city manager, what she does, things that, there's only certain things that come to the city council when you get into the budgets and things like that. There is a lot of it. When it comes down to what she's doing with the different departments and stuff like that, I've actually asked department heads, do you agree with this? You know, is this something you want to see? Is this what you, do you like the writing in this? I asked the fire chief and the police chief both, are you guys okay with what this says? Different things like that. But when it comes to council itself, yes, we do not have, you know, we don't say, you know, there's a minor issue or something that doesn't come to council. We're not going to know about that, but it doesn't mean we can't go in and find out. So, you know, Susan, you can talk to Susan forever. You can go in there and you say, hey, what's going on with this? Or something like that. And she's very open about things, allows herself a lot of time. But she is, I think she's doing a good job. She's very knowledgeable with, when it comes to all the grants and all the finances and things like that. So I do think it's working at this time.
I think having the elected city council, elected mayor and the city manager style employee, I think works really well and keeps our continuity of services. So the city manager does work for the mayor and the council and that person takes direction from us. And so if we want something to change, we can guide it there. I mean, that's, that's the way it's set up. The city manager works for us and we work for you. And that's how it cycles through there. Because I think if you went back to the elected full-time mayor, I think that can lead to too much turnover and change and turns into a political position running city where I don't think any of us, I don't want to speak out, turn on it's behalf, but I don't think we see this as a political position. I think we see this as a service position. And I think having that, once again, having that professional city manager keeps our good continuity of services and takes care of the city.
So we've come to the end. So we're going to have two minutes for you to close. During this time, you can talk a little bit about any of the issues that came before. If you'd like to retouch on any of them, or if you would just like to talk to people about what we have going on coming up for the city council or politically talking about how we evolved from here.
I don't have a great prepared statement here. I'm happy that you all are here. I'm happy you're all interested in this. I'm happy that everyone here is on the stage is running. It's always great to have new blood in there. So, yeah, the big issues to me are keeping working-class people being able to afford to live here. And doing something with housing situation is critical. I also want to say that we've, over the past couple of years, the resort tax has been an issue that I think had been controversial for a while. Now people are starting to see it work and I think the resort tax is doing what we intended to do. We didn't talk about much of that tonight, but I think that's a great program that's capturing the dollars that are coming through here from, from the tourists and helping turn it into them paying for the services they're using rather than forcing us locals to pay for it. So I know some of us on the council were involved in that. I was really proud to be a part of that and make that happen because it really takes the burden off of us, not just with the property tax relief that it provides, but actually providing for the public safety and public infrastructure that we all benefit from, but we don't have to pay for what the tourists are using passing through town because now they're just getting paid for it. But otherwise, thank you all for coming. I didn't prepare much any better than that. Thank you.
I would just encourage people to stay involved with the city council, with anything in your city that's going on. Be involved in something. Do not believe what you read on social media. If you feel like somebody, wow, that really sounds great. That really got, that really hit home. Check out the facts. Check out the research. People start throwing numbers around. They start throwing their facts around. And that really makes it difficult sometimes to move forward with things because we spend a lot of time sorting through what is factual and what is somebody's rabble-rousing opinion. And social media is great for that. Don't read it. So, but my, my thing is just, I really want to see a lot of interaction of city council and citizens. I think that is very important because we all are on the same ground in this town, every one of us. So research. Don't just believe it because you heard it. I would just say research your stuff if you really want to get in it. And if you're not just into the city council, there's lots of volunteer opportunities in Columbia Falls to stay in touch with people.
Resilience of this community. I guess that's what I'm most proud of. I realize that we've got some stuff built down there that, boy, God, that's ugly. That's terrible. Well, they had the money to do it. And you know what? It's busy. We don't have the industry anymore, folks. We're making this city viable. Yeah, we've got to contain it a little bit. And that's part of the reason that I think we're all running is, is to kind of keep that tab on things the best we can. But I'm, I'm proud of the way the city's kind of going. It's, no, it's not my old, buying my hot cashews at Boise's, whatever it was. But, but, you know, it's a town that I could be proud of, to tell my grandkids, well, you know, this is what it is now, but this is what it used to be, but you can't always go back. You've got to live with the future a little bit.
I deeply love this community and I care about the people in this community. I care about our past. I care about our present, but I care about our future. Not, not just for me, but for my children, grandchildren and our community members. And with that, we do have to look at growth within our community, but responsible growth and planning growth. I know there's been push for growth to just go east and we've got a river there that we've got to deal with. I would rather see this community focus on growing west, which is the natural progression toward the other city, toward the big junction there. There's not a river that already has contaminants in it from CFAC. And talking about trying to put the sewer and services under the river is very distressing to me about our growth as a responsible council, community. So I'm not against growth. I just want it to be responsible. I want it to be thought out and planned, but thought out by the existing